Chair, Commissioners and Members of the public, this is a study session to review proposed plans for a fourth tower at the Watergate Office Complex located across the street here. The current development is three towers and the Speaker Company that owns the property has submitted to the city's a series of options for either a single office tower or a two building permit or proposal. And the purpose of tonight's meeting is to review in detail those plans with you. Staff has been working with Speaker for the last over a year now with the issues and design elements that we think are important for this site. And the applicant, they have applied, they have filed an application preliminarily. That application is incomplete at this point. The environmental review is underway. And the purpose of this meeting tonight is to get your preliminary comments and suggestions regarding the design process to date and the other major issues involved in the application. From there, we will take it, work further with Speaker, and it will eventually come back to you as a formal application public hearing. But at this point, Speaker wanted to get this in front of you and hear your preliminary comments as the design was evolving. So with that, I think I'll introduce John Winter, who will take over from here.
Thanks Claudia. Before I dive into the details on our proposal, I thought it might be helpful for me to give you first a little bit of background on our company. Speaker Properties has been operating here in the Bay Area for over 25 years. We're a publicly traded real estate company, and we've been developing and investing in real estate here in the East Bay for over 20 years. Back just over two years ago, we acquired about a million square feet here in Emeryville. It was a seven-building portfolio, included the Watergate Complex as well as the former Charlie Brown's Restaurant. Shortly after we acquired the portfolio, before we did any work, we felt it was important to go out and speak with our new clients, our existing base of tenants, as well as citizens, staff, and the other different agencies to understand what people's priorities were before we started any work. We heard as an example from the Fire Department, they want a fire sprinklers in 1900 Powell, and we've since completed that work. Building Department wanted to see better handicap access, which has now been complete. In total, we will spend over $10 million to renovate that project. We're just wrapping it up right now. We have also learned, one of the very, one of the positive things that came out of this was that we have 170 tenants. A number of them are rapidly growing companies, firms like Age Wave, Law &amp; Economics Consulting Group, Extensity, just to name a few, who have been actively growing in the two years. And to date, we have been successful in accommodating that growth. But we're now approaching about a 97 percent occupancy level in the project. And that may sound like good news, and indeed it is good news in the short term for us, but it's not particularly good news for our existing base of clients. And we recognize that over the long term, that if we can't accommodate their growth, that they're ultimately going to leave the complex and quite possibly leave Emeryville altogether. So that's what really brings me before you this evening, is we are eager to move on and provide more space for our existing base of tenants and also for the increased demand that we're seeing now coming over from San Francisco. We have, as Claudia had pointed out, we have been through, as far as the process is concerned, and been meeting with the staff for over a year now. We have also been in front of various community groups and have had multiple community meetings. Again, the purpose, and again, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to get your input in advance of embarking on this process so we can integrate everybody's ideas to come up with a design that's as responsible as can be. We have tonight three different development scenarios, and it is our intent to process a development agreement that would provide for, in our first scheme, a single office building that would be in total about 300,000 square feet. The total size would be about 16 stories in height, which by way of reference is the same height as our building that currently exists at 2,000 Powell. The second development scenario provides for a two-building phased scheme. That would be a, include a nine-story office building and 11-story building, and would be done over time. That project would be in total a bit over 300,000 square feet. The third development scenario is an office building with a hotel. And it was really, staff was behind us providing for this third alternative, and so we have integrated that approach into this as well. When we were putting together our team, we wanted to make sure that we had an architect on board that could provide us with a project that we could be proud of and the community could be proud of. We hired Ted Korth. Before going out on his own, Ted was the lead architect at Gensler. Couple of the buildings that he has developed in the past, he has been responsible for designing locally is 1111 Broadway, the APL Building. And some of you may also be familiar with the Oracle Campus. In fact, Ted's a, is actively, continues to work with Oracle to this day. We have, with that, I will turn it over to Ted and Larry Pearson of SWA.
Hi, good evening. I'm Ted Korth with Korth and Saryhagey Architects. What I thought I'd do is just walk you through the design evolution, what we've been through in the past year or so, and I'll do it quickly. Don't be afraid of all these boards, I won't spend a long time on each one. But I thought it'd be interesting to see quickly what we've gone through to arrive at where we are today, so you get a better understanding of generally how it's evolved over time. And I don't know if it's possible to see these, they're, what we ended up, this is the existing complex. This is a 16-story building. These are two 12-story buildings. This is the garage, and this is Powell Street. And this are just little reduced drawings to show ways of approaching a layout of the site. And initially, we had a tall building adjacent to the other buildings. Speaker Properties has looked at this as completing an overall project rather than one individual building next to an existing complex because they do own all the other buildings. So what we've been trying to do is come up with a culmination of this whole site and completing everything as part of this project. This was showing a two-level, grade plus two-level garage. Just gives you a general idea of the size of the building, the size of the garage. We've made some adjustments to make a taller portion of the garage in this case, in the lower section there to tier it down. Tried to complete it so it would be a ground plus three levels with no surface parking or ground plus three levels with limited surface parking in this location. At the time that we went through some of these schemes, we met with Claudia, and we'd met with Terry O'Hare, and we've met with Frank Fung, who's an independent consultant hired to review the project for the city. And we began a dialogue with them to go through the project, to make some changes, and we've had a number of sessions back and forth. And so when we had reached this point, we developed a scheme that was based on that garage, which is grade plus three levels in a single-level tower or single building. And the building was, before we started this really, this dialogue with everyone, was reminiscent of the existing building with some changes to make it more contemporary. And this was submitted for the initial study, so that's in the process in terms of environmental review, in terms of general size of the project and the cars that are generated and all. From that point, we have met on many occasions and are now in this stage of the project, and that's what I thought I'd show you this evening. What we tried to do, actually, maybe I'll put this over here. Some of the comments that, excuse me for one minute. Some of the comments that we were hearing was that the Frontage Road is a very important entry to Emeryville along Highway I-80, and that this area along the Frontage Road is of critical importance to you. That surface parking was not desirable in this location because of the potential for a grand entry coming into the site, and generally that there was not as much landscape as there might be to accommodate all these different elements. So this evolved into an idea of compressing the garage into the, into the high-rise building to free up land area along the Frontage Road to allow this landscaping idea to continue through, and Larry Pearson will go through that from SWA, to have a major entry off of the Frontage Road, and to start taking a look at the building to change it to be less similar to the existing towers that are out there today, so that, these are very rectangular. The thought was to start developing this so that it related to the rectangular portion of this building, and then evolved and changed and became more modern as it went away and became more interesting. I thought I'd put a model up there, if that's okay. Maybe we could just leave, maybe it's better up high. Can you see this from?
Yep.
Okay. The idea behind this is to come up with a form that recognizes the other buildings in terms of the general rectangular character of the existing buildings, but then as it heads and faces towards the Frontage Road, to come up with a more sculptural form that breaks away from the rectangle. And the idea was to develop it as an idea, a metaphor of sales on the bay, if you will, where there are glass curves. It's a little hard to hold this thing. Thank you. But these glass forms would then face the Frontage Road and face Highway I-80, and then the end of this parking structure would be developed as more of a building that's glazed and not in any way designed to, to give the imagery of a parking structure in that location. This is essentially the same height as the existing 16-story building. These are the two 12-story buildings. So we thought that the scale of it was appropriate in context with the other buildings on the site. And maybe I'll show you the two-building scheme and then try to make the, explain what the exterior wall would look like. Again, as John explained, the other idea was to develop this with two buildings and a parking structure so that they could phase development over a period of time. And these are just different variations of how this developed. We ended up with a building here, a building here, and a parking structure, independent, three independent structures, and developed that for a submission for the initial study, which is what's shown here. And this is in the, this is in the City for Design Review and Environmental Review, and these are images of the buildings. Again, they're fairly rectilinear. The idea was, again, pick up the existing buildings, but then break free of them to make them somewhat more modern. Part of the design review process in our sessions with Claudia and Terry and Frank was to try to find a way, again, to not have as many elements on the site and to compress the development, to leave more surface area available for landscape, for the continuation of this row of trees, for a major entrance off of the Frontage Road, and develop buildings that are more dynamic in form than the existing buildings. And the model for that, thank you, is here. And in this, in this case, there's a building on the Frontage Road. There's a building at the interior with a ground plus three levels of parking above grade in between the two. And...
Could I ask you, where's the Holiday Inn?
It's right here.
Oh, dear.
I'm sorry.
I see, okay.
It's a little hard, paper models are, only paper models.
Take the models, work the L-L for us.
Okay. But again, the same idea that if these planes of the building were developed to pick up the fact that it's on the bay and the exterior wall was developed in a way that that metaphor of a sale could become a really nice form on the, on the Frontage Road, on the highway, and also give a really nice dynamic character to the project. What I thought I might do is show you a couple of buildings that I've worked on to maybe equate paper to curtain walls or exterior walls. I guess I should put this so you can see it. Thought was that the curved, the curved forms could be a, more of a glassy element than a solid, solid element. That portions of the rectangular part of the building could be more of a punched expression, a rectangular window and a solid plane, which is similar to what the other buildings are. So in this area, these walls could be reminiscent of the existing buildings, and then once they get to the other side, it would become different than that. This is another way of expressing a wall or a curved wall with glass and metal banding, which is fairly contemporary. And another idea is to have, and this is just to show out ideas what this could evolve into, we're not trying to propose a design here, but sometimes white paper models are limited because that's all they are. If, the other idea would be to have the floors expressed in a, in a concrete cast, precast band with glazing in between on the curved sections, and then the more rectangular portions of the building could, again, still relate back to some of the expression on the outside of these buildings. This is a picture of a material translucent glass, which I heard was mentioned on an earlier project tonight. But the thought on the single-building scheme would be to use that translucent glass on the portion of the garage, which is right here, and so that there would be essentially just a glowing glass wall in that location with landscape in front of it. And it would not in any way appear to be a garage. There's a sensitivity to the importance of that street, and we approached it as a building that was mediating between this building and that.
Is there parking on the roof of that structure?
Yes, there is. But we did, on this, on this area, this wall would extend up six or eight feet above the top of the parking deck, and so if there were any cars parked there, you wouldn't see them. And then in this area, it would go back and become probably more simplified. You need natural ventilation, so there will be openings in the wall in that location. But this area would not be open, so it would be, thought would be that you could develop it in a translucent glass wall system that would really look nice at night, during the day would look also very nice, and the ventilation would occur in an area where no one would be, no one would see it.
Have you thought of any, about putting some retail in that area?
We, maybe John Winter could address that. We, we talked about it, the issue has to do with the, well, maybe John, you could address that.
Sure. We did, Joe. We, we were concerned about a couple of things. One was just that area can be rather congested along the Frontage Road, and just having people coming in and out of that area just added to the challenge of making that, our traffic work there. The other aspect is that we have not had great success with some of our ground floor retail amenities within the project itself. And so that is, will be a component. We've tried to enhance that by way of bringing in Bria's, which is a San Francisco deli. We put them in one of our buildings. We'll have some ground floor restaurant space and some other retail space within the building itself, but we were not anticipating putting it out on the Frontage Road. Are we ready for Larry? Larry Pearson's with SWA. SWA's done projects all over the world. Larry is the person who is responsible for bringing the Canary Palm trees to the Watergate Project. He helped us on the first renovation, so I'll turn it over to Larry.
Thank you, John. The general landscape scheme, sort of the big ideas for both schemes, is the same for the single-building scheme as it is to the two-building scheme. Going in and developing new buildings and a new parking structure in this site actually gives us the opportunity to go back into the existing development and to work out and simplify circulation systems, both pedestrian circulation systems and vehicular circulation systems. And I think to really come up with a stronger development diagram than what exists there today. When we went into the existing development and put in the Canary Island date palms, basically the idea was to create a stronger sense of place to the development. By doing a new parking structure, we actually were, are able to remove some parking that exists there today at the bayfront and put it into the new garage. Thus, we're able to create open space at the end and really open a view to the bay at the end of this north-south Main Street that exists there today. We're proposing that the termination of this north-south Main Street take place at a new rotary, and that there be a pedestrian plaza around that rotary, then a lawn that just opens the view, kind of a flourish out with a gesture to the bay. The other major opportunity that we really have is to do an east-west street that really simplifies the circulation through the property in this direction. That street would be lined on either side by a pedestrian sidewalk. There'd be a double rolled street trees and hedges to really define and articulate that circulation system. Once you get out to the Frontage Road, we'd pick up a medium that once again would have Canary Island date palms that could relate back to the north-south Main Street that already exists there. There's also the opportunity for a major piece of signage that would identify the Watergate Office Complex. Could be a vertical element that would be in a landscape area at that location. I think one of the other opportunities that we have by pulling the building back is to take the bay trail and really continue that trail on through the entire frontage of the property with the same cross-section, about 25 or 26 feet of paving, double rolled trees, decorative paving, and really extend that trail all the way into the Holiday Inn property line. On the interface between the Holiday Inn and our development, there's employee parking and a one-way service road going out, which we could treat in a formal street tree way, create a hedge to create a buffer between the two projects, help to screen the parking garage from the, from the exterior and the off-site views. On the interior then, there's the existing parking lot at this location would be totally rebuilt. There would be a service, or an access road with a drop-off to Tower One, drop-off to the new facilities, which would have a formal streetscape, and then once again hedges that would screen the parking. So I think with this new development, that there's opportunities to come in and really clean up some, some of the existing conditions that are there and make some pretty strong improvements.
One thing we didn't mention, John alluded to at the beginning, one of, one other, the third alternative that John described was the possibility of having an office building and a hotel, or conversely, an office building and a hotel. So there, that's the third option. Generally, the massing would be similar to this.
Our primary objectives in, in moving forward with this development is, first, as I said before, is to accommodate some existing tenants, and the demand that we anticipate will continue for office space in this area. Second is to respond to some of the calls that we've heard from our tenants, as well as some of the people and staff, to create a more cohesive campus-like environment and to take this opportunity to finally tie all these buildings together. Third objective is to provide site improvements that will enable us to substantially improve the traffic flow. Traffic is an issue that I'm sure everybody here is sensitive to. We are as well. And the way we're intending to mitigate and take care of the added traffic flow to this site is to provide for this clear vehicular connection from Powell Street through to Frontage Road. Right now, it's, one has to wind through the old Charlie Brown's parking lot to get out on Frontage Road. As a consequence of that, most of the people still travel out on the Powell Street. We believe, and our traffic consultants have, have suggested this is also true, to provide that new connection directly to the freeway will in essence be making it a lot easier for people to go directly through and get directly into the freeway and stay off the Frontage Roads. That concludes our presentation. I'm eager to hear questions and feedback.
I'll open up one question. Director Capio, or possibly Agency Director O'Keefe, could explain why the city's looking at possibly another hotel or pushing that idea?
Well, we believe it's a good mix of uses. The hotel market up until a couple of months ago is quite strong, and it is a way to mitigate the traffic.
Sorry, I just liked the way you said "up until a couple of months ago."
Yeah, it can, it mitigates the traffic. It produces a lot less peak hour traffic, particularly during the week. And most importantly, I guess, we believe that, and this is Agency Director O'Keefe, but I'll put words in his mouth, and particularly City Manager Flores, in terms of revenue generation, it certainly is a positive generator for the city. So those, we've felt it would be a complementary use as a major employment base on this side of the, of the highway, and the Holiday Inn is always booked.
Right. Agency Director O'Keefe nodded his head in concurrence for the record. Any other questions? Mr. Long?
I have a couple of comments. First of all, I saw Jeff's presentation at Watergate, and so I'm a little familiar with it, and I want to tell you, your landscape architect hit, hit a home run with those trees. It's just, just wonderful. What you've done with the current project, I think, is first-class, which makes me very excited. Now, for the current project, I have a couple of issues. First of all, the single-building option, you have a large, low expanse, which actually, in my mind, isolates the Holiday Inn and does not make it part of the campus. And if I were going to go a single building, I might have that almost in line with Holiday Inn with parking on either side, if I was going to do something like that. The second thing that concerns me is the lack of articulation in the buildings. I know that you're trying to match the current stuff, but if there was a way of designing some more interesting features into the building, it would be, you know, I would be much more for that. But I know you're going to come up with something good, so that's my comment.
Ms. Owen?
Using the design of the existing building as a criteria is not a good idea because we do not think that any of them have any kind of design. I wanted to just make a suggestion that just sort of hit me, and I know you're not going to like this because it's going to cost you money. Well, I work in Oakland. I work in the Oidway Building, which is connected with the Kaiser Building by a five-story parking garage, and on top of the parking garage is a park, which is sort of almost a private park for the people that work there. You can't see it from the street, but it's just fabulous. Could you put a park on top of your garage, or at least consider it? Because all you see is cars, it's really boring. So at least there would be a concept of a park there. Not to be used by the public, but you know, as you drive by there, you look down at a park, the people in my building will look down at a park.
Sure.
I'm sure you'll consider it, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can evaluate it, Chris, as, naturally...
It's just one of the many brainy ideas, I'm sure other people have thrown at you. It just hits me as being really awfully big and blank and uninteresting to have a parking garage right there. And as to the other elements, as far as a hotel versus an office, you know, we're all for that, you know, but the market's going to control that.
That's right. And I'm happy to hear you say that, because this is really, with these different scenarios, I think it's just human nature to say, "I'd like that scenario," and that's the choice I want to make. And frankly, it's, the market really is going to dictate whether or not, if it'd be full-hearted for us to propose a hotel-office scheme when there is very little interest today and out there for people to go out and build hotel space. So it, that's just part of the reality.
Director O'Keefe's mouth dropped open on that one. But go ahead. Mr. Coop?
First comment is really just a recognition of a problem without any solution, for me. When we see new buildings go up, you know, everybody says, you know, "Wow, that's a really nice design, it's going to be terrific," and that may very well be, but within the context of the community, sometimes a very nice building will overshadow other buildings. We are in a unique position here where the developer is also the management company or the owner of the surrounding buildings. How we may ask them to upgrade their other buildings to match may be a question. How we may ask them to upgrade their other buildings to match may be a question, however unfeasible, but it's something to think about.
You mean re-fasad them like we did for $20 million?
I didn't say that. You did.
It's actually... sure, it's a good question, something we went through when we were evaluating our priorities. I mentioned in the very beginning that we went through and interviewed a bunch of different people before we embarked on our renovation plans. Naturally, we went through, there were a bunch of trade-offs that we had to sift through. We, in fact, did have our architect look at a couple of different scenarios, but what we're hearing from people is that what was most important was to tie together the site and to improve the site features. And so that's where we decided to... that's what we decided to make a priority, and that's where Larry did his work on the palms and some of the other entrance features.
Well, it's just that sometimes that landscape is something you see when you're up close, and when you're up close, the building that's quite a ways away is not of concern. And it's a tough problem to solve. The other comment I had was, you mentioned this new campus and everything, and it's sort of an argument of campus versus community. You know, I would like to see whatever goes in to be something that supports not only the building itself, but the community and other types of businesses or support areas, you know, such as maybe a dry cleaners or one-hour photo, but things that help the residents in the area as well as the people living or working in the building. That's it.
Other comments? Ms. Ballinger?
Did I hear him say a dry cleaner's in the building? For the residences... residents where?
Well, not specifically dry cleaning. I mean, but that type of services that benefit the community, not just...
Possible retail.
Not just the people that work there. I'm not offering those as...
Well, I'm just trying to think of what would be there that I would drive all the way up there to, you know, to take parking.
Well, sometimes the people that work there don't get a chance to go to the dry cleaner. They can drop the... and pick up their dry cleaner there.
That's true, too.
Yeah, that's... that happens a lot in the city.
Chew maker, maybe.
Yeah.
And stuff like that.
Yeah.
I don't know. But I don't... I don't think that we're going to make an effort to drive there to take advantage of whatever is down in the retail. That's a little bit far, and I would say that it would have to be really good.
If I can make one... I'm sorry.
No?
If I can make one more comment in hooking on with Commissioner Koo's, Vice Chair Koo's idea on the retail, that's sort of one of the reasons why I had mentioned a little bit on the retail on the front, because if that bay trail is coming down, you're going to have, hopefully, a little more pedestrian traffic than we have right now, and that might spur a little bit of use of retail there, and also invite a little bit more of the community in and make it a little bit more community-oriented. That was a thought, anyway.
Mr. Gett?
Weekday afternoon peak hour shift generation.
We're anticipating that. We hired CCS at the city's recommendation as our traffic consultant, and we've done our preliminary study of several different intersections in the area. As I had mentioned, our way we're mitigating, the short answer to your concern is that, based upon their conclusions, what we've submitted to the city is that there are no significant unmitigable impacts, that the level of service will remain at acceptable levels at the key intersections and any of the three different alternatives. Now, naturally, that will get peer-reviewed. I don't recall, is it fair?
Fair peers.
Peers. We'll peer-review that study, so we'll go in front of another set of eyes. One of the primary measures for mitigating this, as I said before, is to provide for better connection between the projects so that cars can, in essence, redistribute the traffic so they can go directly onto the freeway and take them off the frontage roads.
What I'm seeing is considerable stacking on the eastbound new corridor created within the project in anticipation of the dramatic shift of outgoing afternoon peak hour traffic from the Powell Street egress into the new button-hook signalized intersection, and therefore, that intersection will be, of course, dramatically affected. And what I expect to see is that the projections and analysis for that intersection will suggest much longer signalized movements and much longer protected turning movements at that intersection, and the result is going to be dramatically increased delays for the other movements of that intersection. What I'd like to see is the individual critical movement delays projected for a variety of different conditions, all assuming 100% occupancy, as we know the project will have.
So, Andy, you're talking about the individual turning movements within that frontage road entry, the frontage road entry road off of... onto I-80.
Yeah, it's a five-direction intersection, therefore, and they're all going to have protected movements.
Right.
And therefore, we're talking about a really big cycle.
And projected delays for each movement?
Projected delays for every movement, not just the critical movement.
Right, the critical.
Right. And then you're going to also have a telegraphing serial effect on the Powell-Christie Shellmount loop series of intersections as well, probably less dramatic, but that would be another set of questions.
Okay.
Since San Francisco-bound and eastbound 880 traffic cannot... oh, eastbound 880 can.
Right.
Yeah, all of that. All of that traffic's going to go through the new... the button-hook intersection, isn't it?
Right, so that actually... we actually have projected theoretically that it's going to help Powell-Christie.
It's going to help Powell Street considerably. Sure. It's just going to kill the frontage road.
Well, we don't... the preliminary data we have suggests that most of the delay will occur internally.
That's why I see all the stacking there.
That's correct. So, I mean, it's a matter of balancing that out, and, you know, we have yet to begin that peer-review process, and we have to fold in the projected other improvements as a result of IKEA and the South Bay.
Sure, so if you're three signal changes behind waiting for that signal, it's easy to just pull into Chevy's for a drink while you wait for the signal.
They may have cars. There you go. There you go. Drive-through.
Mr. Gett? Mr. Gett?
Margarita.
Clarification. What's eastbound 880? You said eastbound 880. What is eastbound 880?
Nimitz Freeway to your house.
Okay. I call that west or south, but okay. It's east?
Caltrans directions versus...
They call it east. It's actually south.
It's east.
Oh, no. I was... I thought it's westbound. It's actually south by southeast.
West, okay. Right.
Right.
Yeah, because my interest is how do you get on 80 East? I mean, that's going to be rather interesting. Mr. Germaine, you have any comments?
Just that I like the three-building configuration over the one-building with the large garage. This seems to be...
You mean the two-building, right?
Well, counting the parking structure, three-building. Yeah. It seems to be more proportioned to my liking, but as long as you're asking me for a choice, I prefer the one with the two buildings and the parking structure. That's about it.
I concur with that comment, and, you know, when they've talked about retail, it might seem strange, but, you know, neighborhood-serving retail. I mean, this is going to be its own little neighborhood, but I certainly understand you've got retail spaces in there already and how well they react, but maybe if there is something on the... if you build a building on that frontage road, maybe there can be something that somehow relates. You know, maybe you now have an Applebee's restaurant in there, too. Anyway.
How come you call Chevy's retail on your blueprints?
Because I believe back when we were putting these together, the Chevy deal hasn't been completed yet, and so hasn't updated it yet.
I was thinking about asking if you could show us how tall the Chevy sign was going to be on that. Don't worry about it.
How old is 16?
You're right, yeah. They have a crane out there, just... of course, they could do a temporary... well, they could do a temporary sign, right? 60 feet.
Whatever it is, it's going to be shorter than their complex identification sign. You know that.
Yeah, you're right. There were items on here.
I think we've covered a lot of them, but I just wanted to go through a couple of other things just to make sure. We've got... I think I've got the overall program proposed, the comments from you. The environmental issue, issues the... I want to make sure that the initial study, you knew, was underway, the traffic study, and our notion is to review those in detail and at least peer-review traffic, if not more if we need to, but most of it is fairly standard information. There are gaps in that initial study at this point, and we have to work with the applicant to fill those in, particularly the visual analysis with the schemes that are currently being evolved and the wind tunnel analysis. There's two buildings that are fairly close together. If you had any other issues, we would also include those, but it's going to be a fairly complete survey or initial study. Site planning and building design, your comments and concerns about building form and massing, I've heard some of them. I wanted to note that in the 16-story scheme, the one-building scheme with the parking garage in front, that would be, as now proposed, slightly higher than the height limit for that... for this area. We have 175 max, and they are proposing a little over 200 feet, so it would be slightly higher. If you had any comments about that. My sense is that the building is somewhat better proportioned, a little higher, and at that number of stories, you really can't tell 175 versus 215, but we will review that in more detail with the visual analysis. And then finally, the design of the parking structure, particularly for the one-building scheme, our concern from the very beginning at staff level and with working with Terry O'Hara and Frank Fung has been the massive, flat structure on... right off of Frontage Road. The applicant has taken some significant strides in making that a more interesting structure, but it will read like a large parking structure regardless of how we dress it up, particularly in the front, and I think they've done a good job in pulling it back, pulling more landscaping in front, so at least the fronted... I mean, the bay trail runs through and is a significant access feature for not only the project, but for that portion of Frontage Road. But if you had any other comments concerning that, I would be glad to take them in.
I ask you a question, and I'm not quite understanding your logic. If you're going to use the one big building and the parking structure, why you wouldn't want the building on the front and the parking structure behind, since it's more cohesive with all the other parking, because that's all behind there? I mean, I'm just...
Yeah, there...
What was your logic of that?
There are pros and cons to each, and we have... we concluded that really fit best, from a massing standpoint, pulling it in, and there's lots of different pros and cons, as I said. If you put the building out on the frontage road, then it obscures views a little bit more over from PPP. Where it's presently positioned, it sits back more within the existing envelope of existing towers. We felt that getting... creating a good, clean pedestrian connection to the building when it sits out on the frontage road is more difficult. It's more difficult to create a cohesive campus where people can walk easily from building to building by having that one building kind of sitting out there alone out on frontage road.
Have any of your iterations explored the idea of stepping back from, say, two or three stories from the frontage road back instead of having the tower that sort of increments that step back over a parking structure?
Having... well, one of the constraints that we face is how we need to make sure that the floor plates for the buildings are divisible and can be attractive to both the small and the large tenants, and so it leads you down the path of a more rectangular-type building. If I'm following it correctly...
Single hallway, double-loaded.
Single hall, exactly. And so it just... it is more efficient for... and that way, we can appeal to both the small companies, and there's certainly lots of them in our existing portfolio, as well as the large ones.
Well, Andy and I were just chatting a little bit and talking about Claudia's issue on the single building, and we had done some talking with some of the architects about something, a concept called minor buildings, which were, you know, made almost... it's almost like that might work there, you know, where you might have some actual office space right in front of that, you know, a small... as sort of a smaller building. I'm just... we're just throwing out ideas, just thoughts, and that would then... it wouldn't look like a parking spot, especially with Chris's Park on top. And so, you know, that might be actually helpful and would give you maybe some more square footage, but just a thought.
Sure.
I didn't see them here tonight with the stepped facades, but some earlier site plans that I think I remember seeing that had a convex curtain wall like the APL building. One of the drawings I think I saw showed it angled in a way that I had a slight concern about reflection hazards for morning southbound commuters in wintertime sun, reflecting off that curved facade and creating a wide range of blinding reflections if the angle was wrong against the freeway. I don't think I'm seeing it on any of the site plans that I've seen here tonight, but it would be... there is a concern about certain kinds of reflection at certain times and certain angles.
Sure.
It would be something that I would pay attention to if the site plan looked like it was at risk.
All these trees that surround this parking structure will be planted at that height when they're installed?
At the top of the structure.
They grow fast.
We grew up several rows of trees, as you can see there, to provide for a nice green wall. They have a good record with those big palms. Yeah, they do.
I'm sorry, is it going to be planted?
Other comments? Any public comment? Jim?
Public is a jerk.
Hey, Jim, I...
Get up here. No dead-rotting pears.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Where's my agenda? Other items?